Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here today for our 2025 Underhill Town Meeting. My name's Dan Mans. My wife Liz and I live out on the Pleasant Valley Road out of Underhill Center. We've been in Underhill for about forty, I don't know, three, four years now, and I've been the moderator for the last several years. We're going to begin this morning with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have the Boy Scouts from Troop 627 to lead us with that. So the first item of business we need to cover is to actually elect a moderator, and I will turn that over to our Select Board Chair, Bob Stone, to handle that.
I'm going to announce nominations for the position of moderator are now open.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion. I make a motion that we elect Dan Mans of Pleasant Valley to be the moderator for the town of Underhill for the year 2025 and thereafter.
Thank you. Are there any other further nominations? If there are no other further nominations, we're going to close nominations. A vote to close nominations is required. All those in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I guess I'm going to say now, all those in favor of Dan Mans being the town moderator for the town of Underhill, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll ask the town clerk to record that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it. So that was an interesting little exercise we just did there, electing a moderator, and this year it was legal. Turns out that the first bill that our legislature passed this year, I believe was H, I forget, H-58, H-78, one of them, but a number of towns had it, or it was in state law, I guess, that towns that elected officials needed to do so by Australian ballot. And it turns out, most towns did just what Underhill has done forever and ever, is elect the moderator from the floor. And so somebody raised their hand and said, wait a minute, how do we get away with electing a moderator from the floor when all other town officials have to be elected by Australian ballot? So the legislature went back and they inserted three words, I believe, into the law. They said, towns may elect any or all town officials by Australian ballot. And so it leaves an opening for moderators to be elected from the floor. So I know you had all been worried for many years that maybe this wasn't quite kosher, but we got it now, and I think what you did is just legal. I'm sure many of you woke up this morning asking yourself, hmm, I wonder what happened on this date 233 years ago? That's a really good question, because on March 4th, 1791, Vermont became the fourteenth state to join the United States of America. And so happy anniversary to everyone who is gathered here in Vermont, and may we continue our business of democracy that was started for us as a state on that day. Before we dig into any of today's warned articles, let me share a little bit of information about the conduct of this meeting and our expectations for the day. As moderator, my job is to help facilitate the will of this assembled body. Not my meeting, this is your meeting. And I will do my best to preserve orderly dialogue and assure that we stay on track with the required procedural elements. There's a few announcements that I need to make as we get started. The polls are open behind you. I hope that many of you have voted, and please know the polls are open till 7:00 PM. So vote before you leave if you have not already done so. If we had an emergency in this room, we've got emergency exits over here, and over here, and back here. So just for everybody's well-being before we go, our animal control officer, Jennifer Silpy Katz, has asked me to remind everyone that Fluffy is due to be reregistered by April 1st. So if you haven't attended to that, please take care of it. We're also trying to help the Cowan family this morning. Many of you may have seen in Front Porch Forum over the last few days, their dog Junie is missing, has been seen over in the Range Road South Hill area. She's a tan and white pup, about 45 pounds, has floppy ears. She's a little skittish, so if you should see her, the Cowans would appreciate a report. Their phone number is 802-316-9874. It's probably better, call them, let them know where you saw the dog. They'll be happy to come out and see if they can retrieve her. Retrieve her, that's okay. Anyway, our thanks to the Underhill Jericho Lions Club for arranging today's luncheon. Also want to thank the Historical Society for filling that role for many years. The most important part of my job today is to get us done by lunch. So stick with me, I am very food motivated, and you know, if we really ran into lengthy discussion, we can take a break and come back. But I'm optimistic we'll be able to get that done in time. I want to say thanks to a number of folks who helped make this meeting possible today. The good folks from Mount Mansfield Community Television are over here in the back broadcasting today's meeting. Thank you, Angelique, for being here and helping us cover that. Super Sounds DJs are over here making sure that the sound equipment works. Our microphone runner, Amanda Bosley, back there when you speak today, she'll be bringing the microphone around to you. I believe Georgia Bosley is in the home ec. room, taking care of kids, providing childcare in there. The Lions Club, as I mentioned earlier, hosting the luncheon, and I think the Historical Society has donuts and coffee out there in the hallway as well. Can I ask at this time, those of you who are not registered voters in the town of Underhill, please raise your hands and identify yourself. Okay, so look around, there's a few folks here. So only registered voters in the town are allowed to vote or make motions. If there's no objection, we have historically allowed non-residents who are town employees, agents, or affiliates of groups serving our community to speak about their reports and answer questions as they come up. So I think that helps us get through the business a little easier. Calvin Coolidge once said, "Let men in office substitute the midnight oil for the limelight." And at the outset of our work today, I would like to recognize some of the hard-working people who serve the town of Underhill. So as I call these groups, if you are in one of them or ever have been in one of them, would you please rise and remain standing until I get to the end of this list? So anyone who's an employee at the town hall, please stand. Anyone who holds an elected office in the town, please stand. Anyone who is a teacher or staff member in Underhill or anywhere in our local school district, please stand. Anyone, hold the applause, there's a few more, no. Anyone who serves voluntarily on a town board committee or similar group, please stand. Anyone who provides services to Underhill through a private nonprofit or similar kind of group, please stand. Okay, look around. Here's who is burning the midnight oil on behalf of this town, and it takes a village, a lot of people, to make this work. So thank you very much. There's a lot of opportunities to serve in this town, and I encourage you, find something that you feel passionate about and offer to help. It can be very rewarding. I've already got the primo job, only work one day a year as moderator, so it's a good gig if you can get it, you know? All right, a little bit about Robert's Rules of Order. They are the basic rules required for town meetings, except where a state law takes precedence. And I know that Robert's Rules of Order is sometimes a bit of a foreign language for many people, so quick refresher on elements you might need to do business today. An article must be moved and seconded by the body and then restated by the moderator before it is under consideration and debate can begin. So we'll go through the motions in order. After I restate the motion, whoever made the motion gets the first opportunity to speak about it, if they wish, they don't have to. Debate can then go to other persons interested in speaking about the motion. Once you have spoken on a particular article one time, I'll try not to recognize you a second time until everybody else has had an opportunity to speak if they wish. And again, if there's no objection, we'll follow our tradition of limiting speaking to about three minutes duration. I'll do my best to keep track of time as we go along. All motions, remarks, discussion need to be addressed to the moderator. I'll do my best to recognize people in the order I see hands being raised. Speaking to the moderator helps us avoid back and forth and get conversations going that can get out of control sometimes if people are speaking to each other. Each time you speak, when you begin, please wait for a microphone to arrive. Amanda, very fast, new track shoes this year. She's going to be like zipping that thing around. And when you talk, please state your name and give us where you live, like Dan Mans, Pleasant Valley Run. That is very helpful to those who are watching online. Also helps people who are taking notes capture who made the motions, who seconded motions. Those things need to be kept for our minutes of the meeting. Once introduced, an article can only have one amendment at a time. You can make multiple amendments to an article, but only one can be under consideration at a time. Only to make that more exciting, likewise, an amendment can only have one amendment to the amendment at a time. I'll try and keep track of that as we go. It's easy to have the conversation drift off of the original motion, so please do your best to stay focused on the article that's under consideration. If you get lost along the way about, what are we doing? Why are we doing this? Feel free to rise and say, point of information. I will do my best to halt the conversation at that point. It's not an opportunity for you to seek more information about the article or an amendment that is under consideration, but it's just a way of being able to ask a procedural question. So for instance, once we vote on an amendment, you might say something like, once we vote on this amendment to the main motion, is there an opportunity to make another amendment before we vote on the main motion? That would be the kind of question that might come up as a point of information. Article five this morning is going to be to transact any other non-binding business thought proper when met. Under this article, we'll have considerable latitude to discuss other subjects of town business that we did not consider elsewhere in the meeting. I remind you though, that we cannot take any binding action under that article. It's a great time to share information, for awareness, make an announcement, that sort of thing. And then the remaining articles are Articles six through eight, which are being voted by Australian ballot today. As such, those articles cannot be amended from the floor. They're discussable today, but we will not be voting from the floor. You're voting back here by ballot. When we get to those articles on the agenda, we don't need a motion to introduce them, or a second, I can just lead us through those. In my experience here, Underhill has been blessed, really blessed, with civil dialogue and debate at our past town meetings. The Front Porch Forum had a poem in it last week. I don't know if many of you saw it, I'm going to read it to you today, about the status of democracy in Woodbury, Vermont. And that the message resonated with me as having applicability today for our meeting here in Underhill. So please bear with me for a moment as I read it. You can close your eyes and imagine wherever it says Woodbury, just think Underhill. "Anyone looking for democracy on Monday night could have found her at Woodbury Town Hall, sitting on a folding chair among a group of residents meeting with the Select Board to discuss the proposed Woodbury Mountain Wilderness Preserve. She sat attentively through the presentation, learning about belt and suspender conservation easements, forever wild preservation, saw-wet owls and fingernail clams, use-value program, red-spruce cinnamon fern, carbon fishers, American beech, transfer tax, linkage, Worcester to kingdom, and eagle ledge watershed divide, lamoyle, winuski, meeting again in Lake Champlain, black cherry, perpetuity, blue warbler, yellow-bellied flycatcher, pink lady slipper, hugo mare, and E.B. Hyde. One mountain, four towns, and a family that cared for its land. As the agenda proceeded to comments and questions, she edged forward in her chair. The public body raised its hands, representing voices ready to speak. In turn, the moderator signaled, and they spoke. Proponents citing water, wildlife habitat use, protecting the roots. Opponents citing hunting, logging, traverse, tradition, protecting the roots. Strongly in disputes, assertions, rebuttals. Yet civil, forbearing, keeping the ground fertile, proceeds of concessions and fruits of consensus. In my custody herself, said nothing, but nodded in agreement at points well-made on both sides. She noted the silent and eager, with hands raised, awaiting to speak, such restraint affecting the orderliness required by Vermont's open meeting law and the neighborliness needed to build a community. Discussion ended, residents folded and returned their chairs to the corners, then milled about, making a new check. The Chair of the Board carefully, not soon, at last reminded his careless neighbors that although discussion on the agenda item had ended, the meeting had not. Therefore, please remain seated or say goodnight. Then the Board, on its bedrock, freaking wooden floor, and folding metal chairs, resumed the essential works of democracy. She stayed throughout the passage of the motion to adjourn, then donned her frayed coat and walked out the door. She passed the firehouse, the post office, then crossed the bridge at the stream, hiked the hill toward the library and the school. On this cold, clear, starry night, democracy took heart. For though now she feels, in some parts, unwelcome, she finds enduring an unlocked door, and an open floor, and a folding chair at the town hall in Woodbury." So let's get on to our business at hand. And before we begin our formal articles this morning, as has been our tradition, we are fortunate to have a couple of our elected officials here. Trevor Squirrel and Edie Granning are here to join us this morning. And so let me invite these folks up to share a few words, and then we'll get on to the business of the day.
Good morning. Not being very successful at, I'll just hold it. Hi, everybody, thank you so much for letting me speak today. I'm Edie Granning, I live in Jericho, and I represent Jericho and Underhill with Trevor at the State House. I didn't really prepare anything, but I currently serve on the housing, no. I currently serve on the Commerce and Economic Development Committee as the Vice Chair. And we are working on education reform for technical education, so we're working on changing the governance of that right now. That's one of the things that we're focused on, along with workforce. How do we encourage our workforce? How do we encourage housing, which isn't in our committee, but without, it is one of the barriers for workforce, so we are looking at that too, along with lots of other things. So I just wanted to say good morning and thank you. And after Trevor introduces himself, I believe we're open for questions.
Thank you, Edie, and good morning. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm Trevor Squirrel, and I reside in Underhill. I want to thank all of you for giving me your support over the past years. This will be my ninth year in the legislature. The last three bienniums, I've been on the Appropriations Committee, and two prior bienniums, I was on Natural Resources and the Environment. You know, our education system and funding, housing, and healthcare are certainly front and center in the legislature this year. Being on appropriations, we have a real challenge in our current environment in how we balance our expenditures and revenues, and it'll be an ongoing process as we go through the session. At this time, I guess we'll take some questions? If any?
I'm Karen Hess, I live on Pleasant Valley Road. I'm curious what your perspective is on changing the funding formula for school funding. Are you in support of the governor's plan to consolidate schools? Are you interested in looking at an income-based formula as opposed to a property tax formula? Thank you.
Edie's the education expert here.
So I think it's a complicated issue. I think that changing to a foundation formula for education could be really good for Vermont. I think that it will change a lot of things, right? It could change the fact that we wouldn't vote on a school budget. So I think that's something to put out there. We have to look at it really carefully, it depends on what's included. So the current plan, the current plan that the governor has put forward would cut funding to our district by about 17%. That's a lot. And so, and we're a pretty tight-budgeted district, so we are among the lowest in Chittenden County. So I think that the details matter in all of this. You know, for us, we consolidated our district, we saved money, and student outcomes stayed the same. So there are things that can be done. I think there's a lot that can be done, I think we just have to do it really carefully. The pressure on our property taxes is huge, and there's a lot of pressure to act on that quickly. Should we change to an income-based system? Personally, I think that the system that we have that is based in property taxes is really fair. There's a lot that's put in there that makes it pretty, it's not perfect, we'll say it's not perfect. But there's a lot that's done to make sure that folks who can afford to pay, pay, I think almost 70% of people, 65% of people, have some kind of a modification on how much they actually pay for it. And it's, it has not, that has not been keeping up with the way that property values have grown and the way that incomes are changing, so that needs to be fixed. But changing to an income-based system, we'll have to start over and we'll have to really understand who isn't paying their fair share and how do we make that happen? So you know, I think there's a lot of detail that matters here, and it's not going to be an easy change, whatever change we make.
Very much appreciate you coming. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
I think in Vermont, we are fortunate to have such easy access to our elected officials, so it's always a pleasure to have them join us. Okay, so we're on to Article Two. Article Two is to hear the reports of the town officers. A motion on this article is appropriate at this time, but it does not require a second, as there's nothing that we'll be voting on after we have heard the reports. So anyone care to make a motion on Article Two? Get the microphone down here, please.
I'm Bob Linda, I live on Pleasant Valley Road, and I propose or make the motion that we discuss Article Two.
Thank you. Article Two is to hear the reports of the town officers. So we have, the motion has been made. The reports begin in the Town of Underhill Annual Report, and there were more of them available in the back if you don't have one. They begin on page 23, and they go through page 84. So I'll just, I'll do a quick walkthrough, and if you have questions, we can stop along the way. Okay, so the Select Board's report begins on page 23, I guess is on page 23. Any questions, comments, additions from the Select Board about the Select Board report? None so appearing. The Town Administrator's report is over on page 24. Any additions, comments, questions about the Town Administrator's report? The Assessor's report is on page 25. Yeah, my guess is just page 25. So any questions about the Assessor's report? The Town Highway Supervisor's report is on page 26 and goes over to page 27. Any questions for our Highway Supervisor? Other than, what are you doing about that dead skunk in Underhill Center there? Let him rest. And then there's an announcement there about Underhill has a couple of new ways to stay informed with a text email system down there on 27. Questions about that, you can speak to Amanda Bosley. I guess the Highway Report spilled over on to page 28. Then page 29 has the Underhill Planning Commission report. Then, page twenty-nine has the Underhill Planning Commission report. Any questions about the Planning Commission report? We have one over here. Try it again. Who? Now we got you.
Nate Sullivan on the River Road, just got a question about what's a felling equipment table? What's the definition of it in the equipment line here?
Anybody from the Planning Commission able to, oh, Highway, I'm sorry, we're on Highway, yeah, yeah, sorry. Back to equipment. Got it.
Hello? I guess I didn't understand the question, I thought it was for the Planning Commission, so.
Felling equipment table, what is it? What do you do?
Felling equipment table? Oh, that's a misprint, that should be trailer. And you knew that, Mr. Sullivan?
But, but thank you for getting that clear for the rest of us, Nate, we appreciate it because many people came today wondering what a felling equipment table was, you know.
I worked on the Highway Department for several years, and I see you've got, you know, life expectancy of equipment and trucks and stuff like that. I would like to see, especially the trucks, if it's a seven-year warranty, don't hold on to them for any more than seven years, I see they're in here for ten years, because you put a great expense into those vehicles once the warranty, warranty goes off of them. And I think that ought to be addressed and moved up to seven years apiece if you've got an eighty-four month warranty on them. That's one thing I really noticed a lot when I was on the department there. And then, just curiosity, how you get expected life, like you've got three major pieces of heavy equipment, you've got excavator, grader, and loader, how you come up with a term of life on those? Because you've got the loader at twenty years, and you've got the grader and excavator at ten years, and they must get similar wear each year, and how you come up with that equation to what's in the term report?
Jennifer Silpy Katz, Finance Officer. Nate, great questions and comments, and we will be addressing the warranty issue and the wear and tear, and the seven years versus ten years for our ten-year plan. And I'm not butting into Russ responding, but I just wanted to say that those expectancies that are listed on the equipment are from our auditors, and those are the financial expectancies as far as the depreciation schedule and our assets and liabilities. So they're not like, we think it's going to last ten years or fifteen years, those are just standards.
Any more to add to that, or is that essentially the answer? Okay. We, we already got it, we took care of it.
First of all, Nate, thank you for that, bringing that up, and Jennifer, thank you as well. We've started looking at that a little closer, and have started discussions on replacement schedules, which, especially the heavy equipment side of things, which we have not really even in a ten-year plan or in our capital plan, but we are definitely looking closer at that, with looking at our expenses and to spend money more wisely on newer equipment that's ready to go at a moment's notice versus older equipment that is taking a lot of hard-earned tax dollars to keep on the road. For example, our grader, which is twenty-five years old this year, that's asking a lot out of a piece of equipment. Our bucket loader, which is ten years old this year, and still no real plan. So we are going to start working on that a little closer to come up with a better plan to spend money more wisely. So, thank you for bringing that up, Nate, appreciate it.
I believe we are now back on to, let's resume with the, I'm sorry, another question? Sorry? Missed it. On the Planning Commission, you got it, right? Thank you for getting us back on track there.
Rick Hay Kelly Road. We're very happy to see that we've hired a part-time planning person. Excellent. I wonder if someone could fill us in on how that person is going to fill in around work responsibilities and, and what exactly they'll be doing?
Yep. Brad, our Town Administrator, I think can handle that.
Yes, so we, I'm Brad Holden, I'm the Town Administrator, and I also resident, lifelong resident of this town, I reside at sixty Covey Road. So this year, we did, the Planning Commission has been very busy over the last several years, recognizing that our land use regulations don't necessarily align with state statute and keeping up with state law. So this year, we decided to hire a part-time planner, his name is Larry LeWack, experienced in the planning world, and he's hit the ground running, he's doing an excellent job. His primary function will be to assist the Planning Commission in the rewrite of the Does that answer your question?
Close, enough. Okay. Anything else for the Planning Commission? Let's move on to the Conservation Commission on page thirty and thirty-one. Anything for Conservation Commission? Nothing so appearing. Oh, sorry, over here, go ahead. You got the mic.
For the last many years, we've been talking about our ash trees, so I didn't want to leave the ash trees out of this town meeting as well. And every year, we have been talking about the fact that the Emerald Ash Bore is not yet here, and our ash trees are healthy. I think that's done. Ash trees have, we have not had an official confirmed case of the Emerald Ash Bore disease, and the, but it's coming. There are, according to our tree warden, Don Toby, there are many ash trees in town that are dying, and he believes that, you know, there's this little green bog lurking. So, it's important for the town to know because we need to remove those trees. We have a little bit more money in the budget for tree removal this year, it may increase in future years, because the right-of-way is what's important. They're very dangerous after they're dead because they break apart very easily. Extreme hazard trees. If, one more statement, if you have ash trees in your home, and your property, I have several, I inspect from my deck their crowns every year, they are really healthy, I'm hoping that they stay that way a long time. But if you notice your crowns are starting to dissipate, you know, be not leafing out, unhealthy, please give a call to Don Toby, and he will be able to assess that with you and help you develop a plan for your own private, you know, tree cutting, as to when the best time to do it is. And I don't know if Don has anything to add to that, but you are welcome to speak.
This good? All right. Yeah, Dan hit most of the high points there. We did complete the, well, complete all top for one mile of road on Poker Hill, which I haven't done yet, but we did complete an ash inventory in the town, and that is inventorying all the ash trees within the town road, rights-of-way, and public areas. And it came up with two thousand two hundred and eighteen trees. If any of you have ever had a tree taken down by a tree service, you know how expensive that is. This is going to be a really expensive endeavor, and we need to take the trees down while they're still alive, because as Dan mentioned, when they die, they become hazard trees. And Vosha rules state that hazard trees need to be removed by a piece of equipment with an enclosed cab. So that makes removal very, more expensive than just having, say, the road crew go out with chainsaws and take these trees down. We also have power line right-of-ways, which are also overlapping town road right-of-ways. What I've tried to do both in Underhill and in Jericho is allow the electric companies to come and do their thing first, because they're taking some of the trees down that we would have had to take down. So, it's a balancing act, going between waiting for them to do it and us having to do it. And the other issue is that adjacent abutting landowners are entitled to that wood, and we're glad to leave it for people, but what we have to do is contact every single abutting landowner and ask them if they want the wood or if they want the wood taken away. And that's sometimes hard, if people are out of town, or they are not there during the day. So, Brad and I have been talking about how to do this. One way is have Russ go to every house in the, in the town and ask if they want their trees, and we know that's kind of unreasonable. So, we were thinking of doing a door, door tags, which could be hung on, on, you know, everyone's front door, and then posting things, you know, on notices in front porch forum. I think we'll still miss some people, there will be conflicts, and hopefully we'll be prepared to deal with those. Any questions?
Bucky Brandt, Meadow Lane. There are lots of dying ash trees in my neighborhood, I don't know of any on my property, but I did want to ask, last year I thought somebody said that there is, there are two ash diseases, and that the Emerald Ash Bore is but one of them, and, and you're saying now that there are no confirmed cases, but there are lots of dying ash trees. Are they all dying from that other disease, or are they Emerald Ash Bores and we're just not confirming the cases?
I got that. So first of all, Emerald Ash Bore is not a disease, it's an insect, and it doesn't actually transmit diseases either. But there are some ash diseases that are also killing some of the ash. Some of the ash on my property that have died, I find no Emerald Ash Bore in. There's ash yellows, and ashes, ash trees are very susceptible to environmental extremes. We had a lot of ash die back about ten or twenty years ago. That was combined with a heavy seed year the year before, and then a late June frost, which killed all the new leaves that were just emerging. Those two things combined stress the trees to the point where a lot of them died. There are, there are other factors killing the ash, not just Emerald Ash Bore. But once the bore gets here in earnest, it'll go through and kill, you know, ninety-five percent of the trees very quickly. And, that brings up another thought here, let's, research out in the Midwest has shown that about five percent, five to ten percent actually, of white ash trees will survive an Emerald Ash Bore infestation. Green ash is about a hundred percent mortality, black ash is about a hundred percent mortality, but white ash is what we have most of here. There are some survivors. So that's why in forested situations, we're not recommending you go in and cut all of your ash, because some of those may be resistant, and we need those trees, their genetics, to, to, you know, help white ash survive into the future.
Thank you very much for all of that. We have another, another question over here, and I'll remind everybody, please try to stay to three minutes.
Guy Kennedy, South Hill. I'm curious about the beech tree situation, because I do a lot of hiking, and they're dying everywhere I go. Are they just not tall enough to be a problem on the roadways, and any input you have regarding that? I'd be curious. I feel like we've lost American elm, we've got the beech, the ash, should we be planting other trees?
Good questions. One more back over here.
Still working? Yep. So, the beech are dying from Beech Bark Disease primarily, and that, and that's been around for about forty years, and it kind of comes in waves. And you'll, you'll see white fuzz on the bark, which is an, a, an introduced scale insect that came, I believe, from somewhere in Eurasia fifty, sixty years ago. That little white scale, which looks like white fuzz, transmits, transmits this Nectria fungus, which is Beech Bark Disease. A lot of these beech trees that you see dying will have little, little nubs and welts all over the bark, that's the tree trying to fight off the disease. And, as I said, it kind of comes in waves. If you're in your woods cutting trees and you see beech trees with nice, smooth bark, definitely leave them because they're probably genetically resistant to either the insect or the disease. And, and you're right, we're losing a lot of trees. Butternut is basically going to become extinct, elm is no longer a factor. The beech seem to be holding their own though, although it does, they do die off in patches. And now ash. So, we need to really hope that Asian Longhorn Pigtail doesn't get here, which kills the Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of things out, out there, and yet the woods still look pretty green, so that's a good thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let us move on then to the Natural Resource Inventory and Mapping Committee, beginning on page thirty-two, and I guess that runs over to thirty-six. Oh, I'm sorry, just thirty-two, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Just thirty-two. Any questions for the Natural Resources Inventory and Mapping Committee? Okay, and then, beginning on page thirty-three, and I guess going over to page thirty-six, is the listing of zoning permits, certificates of occupancy, boundary line adjustments, home business permits, exemptions, access permits, does that all go with the Development Review Board, or is that just standard? Zoning, that's zoning, okay. So that's all the zoning reports, beginning on thirty-three going over to thirty-six. Okay, and then the Development Review Board begin, report begins on page thirty-seven, goes over to page thirty-eight, and then there's some listings of their activity, I guess on page thirty-nine as well. Any questions for Development Review Board? Any questions for development review board? Okay, none so appearing. We're over to page 40 for the Underhill Energy Committee Annual Report, beginning on page 40 and spilling over onto page 41. Questions for our energy committee? Seeing none, we're on to the Underhill Recreation Committee Report for 2024, beginning on page 42 and going over onto page 43. Anything for Recreation Committee? Looks good. Page... Oh, I'm sorry. Got it. Pardon me. Hold that hand up a little higher.
Nate Goldman, Pleasant Valley Road. If anyone, anyone who doesn't drive through Underhill Center in the winter, may not know, but that skating rink that the Rec Committee put up gets a ton of use by young and old. And I think it's just worth recognizing that it seems like it provides a lot of recreation, which is what the point of that is. So thank you.
Here, here. All right. Well said. We are fortunate to have as many opportunities for outdoor recreation in this town as we Okay, on to, oh, one more.
How to use it? Can you hear this?
Yeah.
Does the famous sidewalk come into this discussion?
State your name and where you live. State your name and where you live, please.
John Conville, Underhill Center.
Good. And the question again was?
The sidewalk proposal. I'm, I'm curious if that is an update with this report or somewhere else in the meeting?
Not an update for this report. Is there any other source to look for information? Next report. Okay. Got it. Got it. I believe we're on to page 44, the Underhill Highway Equipment and Infrastructure Committee. This might be the place for that question. So you want to tackle that one or? Yeah, put up here for Brad, please.
So can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So for those of you that don't know what the Underhill Highway Equipment and Infrastructure Committee is, it was a committee that was formed in 2017 by some founding members, Kurt Johnson, Rick Hay, Mike Weisel, Clark Elliott, Andy Rowe. I spoke about it in my town meeting report. However, they, they not necessarily dealing with the question regarding the sidewalk, but I'll get to that in a minute. I just want to thank Kurt Johnson. Kurt Johnson stepped down this year. I'm sure the select board would encourage me to say this, but Kurt dedicated a lot of his life to this committee and looking at equipment and looking at how we can stretch our long-term debt out and our payment out and how long we can actually run equipment. As well as inventorying the roads, the state of the roads, paving schedules, culvert replacements, bridge replacements such as Bridge 7. But since it's germane to infrastructure, I'll just give a quick rundown of where the sidewalk stands. So as you know, we have some ARPA money set aside for the sidewalk in Underhill Center. We've completed the surveying work that needs to be done there. The next step is it will go to an engineering firm for a design and then hopefully we can take those design drawings and put it out to bid and see how much sidewalk can be completed. So prior to that, we did, the town did receive a scoping study from Chittenden County Regional Planning. That was around a $90,000 grant of which the town was responsible for 15% of, I believe. So that has been complete. We held public hearings. That report is on the, the website. So we'll be using, you know, be utilizing that report, but the main goal is to try and hook our, our properties together at the very least, just see how far the money will stretch, trying to do it ourselves. But that being said, we'll be also keeping an eye out for, for grant opportunities if they should present themselves.
Thank you. One more question right behind you here.
Guy Kennedy on South Hill. Pardon me if this is, it's related, but maybe I should have said something sooner had I thought of it. I have a question about the bridge at the corner of Range Road. When that was put in quite some time ago, Margaret Hummel and others put a lot of effort into getting that in. And immediately after it went in, a tree had fallen upstream of it on the outside of the bend. Bridge is unfortunately on a turn in the river and water was starting to go around the backside of it and headed toward the abutment. And I've been watching it over the years and it's, it's happening again. The first time, this goes back a long time, maybe 10 or 15 years, they brought in a crew and they had to get permitting and such, and they did some mitigation. I think it warrants looking at again because the power of water, when we have our spring runoff, can make a lot of things happen badly. And if water gets behind that abutment, we could be in a, you know, a lot of trouble.
Well taken. Thank you for that information. Be careful, they might recruit you onto the Highway Equipment Infrastructure Committee. You see, there's the danger of that. One more back here.
I'm Bob Linda from Pleasant Valley Road. I just wanted to note that in Brad's report, there's a whole paragraph on page 24 that briefly summarizes the sidewalk situation that you just addressed.
Yeah. Thank you. One more over here.
Nate Sullivan, River Road. I was looking over this Pleasant Valley replacement bridge. Is there going to be a temporary bridge to get people to the other side or will the road be closed down totally when the bridge replacement takes place?
Go ahead, Bob. I'll turn it over to you.
It will not be a replacement bridge and the road will be closed.
It will not be a replacement bridge. It will be closed during the time of construction. Town did hold an information meeting about that last week also. Okay. Forest Fire Warden Report, I believe is next on page 45. Thank our fire wardens for keeping us safe on controlled burns. Appreciate that. On page 46, we move over to the Underhill Town Health Officer Report. Our town health officer is here.
Hear me?
Yep.
I'm Deb Moore. I've been a member of this lovely community for 52 years. I was going to say all my adult life, but I just gave it away. Anyway, I'm honored to be your town health officer and I'm sorry my report was so lengthy, but it's just, you know, we got a, we got a good community and our animals are well behaved and thank you for allowing me to do this job.
Thank you for keeping it that way. We appreciate it. Believe we're then on to vital statistics on page 47 and 48. And then I guess maybe some of this relates to the Recreation Committee's work over on page 49, the report on Casey's Hill, the town skating rink and Tomasi Meadow activities. Any questions? Nope. End of that. Okay. And I'm sorry, question over here.
John Conville, Underhill Center. I'm not sure it's a question, but I'd like to put in a plug in for the Jericho Underhill Land Trust, who preserve that land. We're always looking for members, by the way, but it's really a tribute to the land trust work. Thanks.
All right. I believe the remainder of the reports are from groups that serve in Underhill. We'll run through these very quickly in case anybody has any questions or comments. No? We'll run through these very quickly in case anyone asks questions or comments. Page 52 is the Chittenden County Red Cross. Page 53 is our Boy Scout Troop 627. Page 54 is the, and 55 is the Chittenden Solid Waste District. Page, pages 56 and 57 are for Essex Rescue. Page 58 is the, from the Board of Trustees of the Deborah Ross and Memorial Library. I guess that spills over onto 59, the Director's Report from Holly Hall. And I guess on to page 60 also. 61 covers the Jericho Underhill Water District Board of Trustees Annual Report. Page 62 is a report from the Jericho Underhill Food Hub and there is a ballot article for that group. The, page 63 covers the Jericho Underhill Park District Annual Report. Mills Riverside Park, another great resource in town. Goes over onto page 64. Page 65 is the report from our Mount Mansfield Community Television, who is here broadcasting with us today. We again, thank you. Page 66 covers our Community Cares Camp in Richmond. I guess that goes over onto 67 as well. 68 is the report from Age Well, Vermont. Yes?
Can we go back to CSWD?
Yes. I'm not sure there's anybody here, but go right ahead. You can ask the question. We'll see if anybody knows.
Well, Peter Duval, Pine Ridge Road. The Select Board is the public's connection to CSWD and provides the only path for public oversight of their operations. And I want to talk about the MRF, ask a question about the bond for the MRF. Bond was approved and then what happened?
Are you, are you talking about the CSWD?
All right, sorry. CSWD proposed a materials recycling facility on a, on a very wet parcel. And it's taken a long time for it to realize that, that wetness prohibits or prevents, inhibits construction of the MRF. Bond for that was approved and I'm curious to know about the financial related to the MRF and what's happening with that bond.
The proposed construction of the MRF on the land that was later deemed as wetland is old news. That is abandoned. The bond is still in place and late breaking news, last week, CSWD signed a contract to purchase land from Heinsberg Sand and Gravel on Redmond Road, which will be safer and more appropriate to build a MRF. So that's very new and so it looks like the plans for that will continue.
We have a follow-up and then another question over here. Go ahead.
Well, is the bond sufficient to complete the project?
I, I believe so, but that will be, you know, it's been delayed for two years because of the previous property. So we will have to determine that when the estimates come final. We know what happens when we let things sit for two years. They get more expensive.
Thank you.
Really quick question.
Speak your name and...
Polycon on Krug Road. What's a MRF?
A materials recycling facility. A materials recycling facility. It's an MRF. It's on page 54.
When you work your, your recycle bucket and take it to the drop-off center or have a hauler take it away, that is mixed and it needs to be separated. And if you would like a tour of the current MRF, it's a little outdated, which is why we're looking at something new, that is available and I would be happy to facilitate that. It is a fascinating process and especially when the new MRF comes onboard, you know, they separate things with lasers and, and other things. So it, it's, it's quite the process. But if you want to know more about that, you can talk to me. Materials recycling facility.
I believe we have another question over here.
Glad we came back to this Sandy Wilma, Poker Hill Road. I know composting outside and bears attacking that is really quite an issue and, and it's a problem for, for everybody. I don't know what information you have or the recycling people have for people on that regard. So maybe I'll ask that question, but also I was contacted by UVM to try to find out if there's an area in town that's particularly bothered by, by bears. They have some bear ambassadors that are trying to do some research on that. So if you're in an area like that, I'd like to know that. Thank you. Thank you.
Good. Wow. Dan, please.
As a master composter with the University of Vermont Extension, I teach courses on composting. I have an open compost pit that bears are not interested in at all. Their scat is in the pathway next to my garden. They walk right by it. They do not disturb it. If you would like to know more, I would be happy to confer with you about your compost and if it's, would be desired I could run a workshop as well on composting, which I do frequently.
Come to town meeting, you learn something new every day. Who even knew there was a master composter, you know? Amazing thing, you know? Multi-talented guy. Another comment in the back, back here.
Hi, my name is Monica, Sand Hill Road. And speaking of the bears and sort of that piece of it, I do think I would be very interested, and it sounds like a lot of other folks would be interested about, you know, a presentation about how to make our compost bear-proof or bear uninteresting, as you said. And I'd also wonder if you had any comments about bird feeders or the best way to do that. We had a hummingbird feeder over the summer and that was not disturbed. But our, our seed feeders did get attacked last year, so we took them down immediately. So, I'm wondering if that can also potentially get rolled into that kind of presentation or if you have any comments about that as well.
Quick response, yeah?
It's best to follow the state guidelines, you know, read the newspapers. They tell you when you should take your bird feeders out, down if you put them up during the winter. You should not have bird feeders of any kind in the summertime because it does attract bear. And you, you don't want to get bears used to eating human-connected food.
Thank you. Okay, let us pick back up if we can, going forward to page sixty-nine. The Underhill Historical Society, I believe, was our next report. And I guess that's over on to page seventy. And then we begin the report of the Underhill Jericho Fire Department on page seventy-one. And I believe that continues over through page seventy-five, includes their budget details as well. Page seventy-six gets us to the University of Vermont Home Health and Hospice Report and their request for funding over on to page seventy-seven. I guess that runs through, yeah, seventy-seven and then, oh, seventy-eight. And then the Vermont Department of Health's Local Health Office Annual Report begins on page, I guess is page seventy-nine. And then the Harvest Crossing Affordable Housing Initiative is on, their report's on page eighty. And Jericho Farmers Market Report for the 2024 season is page eighty-one. And then Green Up Vermont's Report is page eighty-two. And the Vermont Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired is page eighty-three. And the Vermont Speenuter, Dog Licensing and Speenuter Initiative is page eighty-four. And I believe that brings us to the end of the reports of service organizations that work with us in the town of Underhill and provide services. So, with that, no vote is required to receive those reports. They are as presented, and I believe we are on to Article... I'm sorry, one more over here.
Hi, Bill Frank from Poker Hill Road. I'd just like to give a shout-out to the group that put the annual report together and all the wonderful pictures of the, some very old reports and everything. Now, shout-out, if you notice at the bottom of the back page, to Roy Kennedy, who actually drew many of these reports. I think it's a beautiful report. Thank you.
Here, here. Well taken. Thank you. Well taken. I believe now we are on to Article Three, which reads, "Shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of $1,909,909,000?" Where did I get here? One, one nine oh nine, four thirty-eight. Is that correct? No. Let me back up to the budget, because clearly what I wrote is not correct. $1,904,386, of which $1,655,988 shall be raised by taxes and $248,398 by non-tax revenue. My apologies about messing up the numbers on that. Is there a motion on Article Three? The microphone over here.
Alice Maynard, Timber Ridge Road. I move Article Three.
Thank you. Is there a second on Article Three?
Peter Geis, I seconded.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second on Article Three, which reads, "Shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of $1,904,386, of which $1,655,988 shall be raised by taxes and $248,398 by non-tax revenues." The budget begins on page eleven of your town report and goes through about the top third of page sixteen of your town report. So, the floor is now open for questions, comments, amendments, any other business related to Article Three. Grab a, over here first, and then we'll come back.
Nate Sullivan, River Road. On line thirty-six, it says, "Post Office Rent." I know, just doing the math, we get about a thousand dollars a month. I know, I think, if I remember correct, you get locked into a price for so many years. I just think a thousand bucks a month for that building is kind of low. And has that been put on the table to increase that anytime when the contract comes up to do it again?
Bring the microphone. Oh, okay. You can take it back here. Yeah.
Um, it's more Sherry's. Sherry meets with them and, and does the lease, but it's a five-year lease, and I believe we're either two or three years into this five-year lease. And certainly, we will negotiate when that time comes.
Good question, Nate. Hold that for another three years and then bring it back up again, you know. Good. Do you want a comment? Good. Eddie?
Bob Linda, Pleasant Valley Road. I just was curious, I thought it'd be interesting to know what some examples of non-tax revenue are.
I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I thought it'd be interesting to know what some examples of non-tax revenue are.
Oh, non-tax revenue. What is it? Jennifer, you want to handle that?
Absolutely. Non-tax revenue is really exciting. Unfortunately, Underhill doesn't have a whole lot of it. We, most of our funds that run this town come from all of us who pay taxes in our town. We don't have a commercial center where, so we don't receive sales tax or use tax or anything like that. Other, there are ways that we do have non-tax revenue. They can come in the form of grants. They can come in the form of debt or loans that the town takes out, for example, to buy a vehicle, or bonds, as is another thing that comes up. But for the most part, we have, most of our, our funds come from tax revenue.
Other question or comment over here?
Ann Linda, Pleasant Valley Road. I'm still confused about the post office. I read the guide online and I think I might be misunderstanding. Are we paying? Why isn't the post office paying us to rent that building? Then what's the twelve thousand dollars?
What's the thousand?
It's in, it's in the miscellaneous revenue category. That's money coming in.
Sorry. Got it.
Other questions, comments, any proposed amendments to the budget? One more over here.
On line seventy-four, under the Administrator salaries, I know the cost of living is three percent this year. I was just wondering why there was such an increase in salary raise for that one line item. It's thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Do you want to handle that, or you want? Anyone care to ex... Select Board, you want to explain that increase, that line item?
The Select, the Town Administrator line item was increased primarily because the amount, the amount of hours that our Town Administrator has been putting in has been extraordinary. As many know, we have been operating without a zoning and planning person for, for over a year. And the Board felt that it was time to compensate. The Town Administrator was filling that role, actually several roles. So, that's why you're noticing primarily, one of the major reasons why there's a increase for the Town Administrator to that degree.
Patty Richards, just add a little bit more to that. We also, for all Town employees, link the cost of living increase each year to the social security rate of increase for the state of Vermont. So, those two are connected for all Town salaries so that we are keeping up with the market forces for our employees and we're keeping our employees. That's another aspect of that increase.
Thank you. Over here, we have one.
Gwen Gustafson, Poker Hill Road. In that same area, I just saw a six hundred and fifty percent increase in training. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Did I miss something earlier?
No.
That explains why such a big increase?
I think it went from two hundred to fifteen hundred dollars, so.
Right. What caused that increase? What kind of training?
Brad can handle that, I think.
So, as you can see, the budget, if we look back at the past years, FY twenty-four is two hundred dollars. Training development is for fees like, if, if I needed to take a seminar or something like that, as you can see, I didn't use any of that money. The proposed budget fiscal year, um, in fiscal year twenty-six, the one we're voting on, there is an increase. And I believe that amount of money is for, I wanted to purchase a tablet. It's really not germane to training and development. I guess it was a place to put it, but a tablet for doing road inventory. So, and also, you know, as, as many of you know, I'm a retired surveyor and I still retain my license. So, some of those fees are paid by the town. I do not practice privately, but the town greatly benefits by having that license in office. So, that's, that's basically it. But training development, I, I don't belong to any associations. My predecessors did. I just come to work every day.
Thank you. Another comment over here?
Don Toby, Poker Hill Road. I just want to point out that training and development could also include chainsaw safety training for our road crew. If we're going to, you know, use our own people to take down some of those trees, ash trees that we need to...
Different category. Out, outboarder there.
But anyway, chainsaw safety and training is, is another, and I'm sure there's other things like it.
Different part of the budget. Yeah.
The road crew, it's not, it's not uncommon to see our Town Finance Officer and our Town Administrator going out during a windstorm and using a chainsaw and moving debris and from the roadway. So, I know that there will probably be some benefits from other folks getting some chainsaw safety as well besides our road crew, so just wanted to let you know.
Signed. Okay, we're still on Article Three, the town budget. Any other... One more here?
Line one oh six, Professional and Technical Surgeophys. Can you explain how you come up with that dollar and what goes into that one here?
Jennifer can take that, I think.
Yeah, so that is, we are planning on doing a statistical reappraisal this year due to the cost of houses and what they're selling for. I know we just did one three years ago, but the market is still increasing like crazy. So, we are planning a statistical reappraisal.
Another question up here.
Rick Hay Kelly Road. How does this statistical reappraisal factor into our tax bills?
Usually, it doesn't factor much because when you're, if everyone's assessment goes up, the tax rate goes down. That's the whole hopes of it, so hopefully not much. Yes, that would change our common level of appraisal from where we're at now. We're at an eighty-four point one six right now. I'm predicting a seventy-five next year. I don't want to get that low, so I'm going to try and do this before next year's tax bills. This year's are set. We're not changing it for this year, but for next year, I would hoping to get that completed by then and raise the CLA so it doesn't make our tax rate go higher.
Yes, right here.
Susan Thomas, Bear Town Road. I'm just wondering if line seventy-four salaries includes health insurance? And also, line eighty-four salaries other, what that includes?
So, the questions were seventy-four. Does that number also include health insurance specifically?
No, I think health insurance is on a separate line under benefits. Uh, two lines down, line seventy-six is payroll taxes and benefits. And then the other question, Susan, was...
I think it was line eighty-four or eighty-five?
Oh, other for Town Clerk, salaries other. Oh, that, that's a, I'm glad you brought that one up. So, Sherry Morn has been our Town Clerk and Treasurer for over twenty years. And we're going to kick her out. No. She's, she's starting to talk about retirement and, and we're putting together some thoughts and ideas about how we can best transition because I think it's no secret to anyone the role that Sherry plays in the town and her institutional knowledge. So, although she's not planning to leave in the next year, we need to start looking at getting someone onboard or people onboard to help us and to start learning what she does. Sherry, I don't know if you want to add more to that? Sheri, I don't know if you want to add more to that? Hopefully that answers your question.
It's gone up 480% from last year.
Some of that $40,000 is actually Nancy Bradford, my assistant. So anything that I have with Nancy comes out of that line item. I think that's it. Yeah. Is that what it was? Forty, and we put the forty, yeah, we put the $40,000 in so that I can transition out in the next year and a half, two years max. So that's what that is. So it's Nancy and whoever we can get onboard.
Okay, still on Article Three. One more question?
Line 125, post office, 126. What's the big major repair going on for $20,000? Or some of it has taken place or anything?
We built in some money to have that building painted. And also, if you walk around it to the right side of the porch, you'll see that the whole right corner of the porch is rotted and sinking. So that money was, is built in there to do those necessary repairs, repairs and painting.
Very good. One more.
Schoolhouse repairs, 130, $11,000. I wonder what we're doing to the old schoolhouse?
We also received information from the schoolhouse that the roof has some kind of a, it's a metal roof, but it has some kind of a special type of paint that can be applied to it so that we don't lose the roof itself. So that is based on, I believe, quotes and estimates that they got to have someone paint the roof of the schoolhouse.
That's the Underhill Central School or the old schoolhouse? Got it. Another question here.
Carl Newt, Corbett Road. I'd like to see us pay our road crew a little more, potentially give them more of an increase like the administration saw within the town hall. And I think this is going to become more important for us as our town crew ages out because I think they get to retire at 55 with a pension. Is that correct, Russ? So I think that's something that's going to be important for our town to look at because paying somebody $25 an hour to wake up at 3:00 in the morning to plow snow and do all the hard work that our town crew does, I think they deserve more for what they're doing. And in the future, to get and retain employees is going to be important. Thanks.
I appreciate the comment. We're in the wrong budget, though. That is going to be our next article after this, okay? But hold that thought for, you know, the next article. We're on Article Three, the town budget. Another question over here.
Hello, Davina Feifield, Poker Hill Road, line 195. I see the, our community cares camp has requested $3,000 from our town. And I don't see anything about it on the line item. And have I missed it?
Anybody? Select Board able to speak to that or? Hold on.
Community cares is on line 184. It is in there. Sometimes I have to combine multiple entities.
Thank you. Back over here.
Line 183 Cemetery Funds. I know the town has one cemetery there, the corner of Sand Hill and River Road. Does that money strictly go to mowing or does that, has anything been sent aside to try and repair some of those damaged stones up there and put them back together?
Brad can take that? I recall we had some discussion last year at town meeting?
Yeah, so what you're not seeing there is at town meeting last year, there was a motion from the floor to increase that line item from 3,000 to 5,000. So really, there's 5,000 in that line for this, the fiscal year we're currently in. And Kurt Belton has come to the Select Board meeting and maybe I'll give him a chance to say a few words, but our hopes are to, but to answer your first question, some of that is for normal maintenance. And Kurt had mentioned, and I'll let him speak to it if he'd like, but applying for grants for stone restoration. The fence is in poor repair, so we're hoping to get that cleaned up and potentially replace the fence. But yes, it's, Kurt came to the Select Board. The Select Board recognizes that the cemetery could use a little attention.
Any follow up? Okay, thank you.
I was, this is Kurt Belton, Sand Hill Road. I live practically within sight of the Sand Hill Cemetery. And this is a good time for me to speak about this. I was trying to figure out when to interject it. There is a small sap bucket sized group of people that are interested in pursuing restoration and ongoing maintenance beyond just mowing the Sand Hill Cemetery. And I've also, with the recommendation of Roland Burrows, have joined the Vermont Old Cemetery Association. And Brad mentioned that we're pursuing grants and we have that in the works for stone restoration, for both reappearance of the stones, those that have settled and are obscured by top soil and grass, and also repair broken stones and reset others that are leaning and so on. We're working on this in two phases. There's that small group I mentioned, we're meeting March 14th to strategize where we're going next. And where we hope to go next is to have a volunteer day sometime in May or June prior to the end of the fiscal year. And so I'll be tapping organizations, individuals, Don Tobin, and members of the Historical Society, Boy Scouts, and possibly community service initiatives from the high school. And that's some of what we're going to be addressing at this upcoming meeting that a few of us, the sap bucket folks, are going to be dealing with. So I will make my contact information available to the town, probably via Front Porch Forum. So keep your eye out for that. We need as many able bodied people as we possibly can find.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mind everybody, we are on Article Three, the town budget. Another question over here.
Sandy Wilmot, Poker Hill Road. Number 186 is the GMT bus route. And I understand they're making some changes, including eliminating the route to Underhill and Jericho. Is there any alternative being planned? And, you know, should we keep some money in the budget to help support some sort of commuting in the future? Thank you.
Good question. Go ahead, Bob.
It's a good question. There is no plan from the... Good question. I don't know if you can hear me now. There is no plan, once the bus service eliminated, service to Underhill and Jericho, as it was one of the most expensive routes that they had. There are no plans that I know of to replace that service. And this was a refund that was going to be coming back to the town for unused portion of the budget as they eliminated the service to our area.
Are we ready for a vote on Article Three? Article Three reads, "Shall the voters approve total general fund expenditures of $1 million..." I gotta go back. I messed it up again. $1,904,386, of which $1,655,988 shall be raised by taxes and $248,398 by non-tax revenue. All those in favor of Article Three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. We are on then to Article Four. Article Four reads, "Shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of $1,995,739, of which $1,554,739 shall be raised by taxes and $441,000 by non-tax revenue." At this point, is there a motion for Article Four? Bill Frank has moved. Peter Geis has seconded. Thank you very much. So Article Four reads, "Shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of $1,995,739, of which $1,554,739 shall be raised by taxes and $441,000 by non-tax revenue." The floor is open. That portion of the budget begins on page 16 and spills over to page 17. About a third of the way down on page 16, where you begin with that highway salary and benefits there. Question over here.
Nate from River Road, line 229, contractors and professional services. Can you break that $70,000 down for us? And I assume that's some of that money set aside for tree companies to take ash trees out or if it's all for ash trees or something else? If they could break that number down for me?
Line 229, right? Any clarification on 229? Hang on, we're in hot pursuit here.
She's looking.
She's looking.
I'm not going to know it all off the top of my head. However, looking at the budget guide that I prepared, and I'll just bring this up because next year, it's, I put a lot of time into it with the help of the staff and the Select Board. And I do a budget guide that goes line by line with the budget. And I think it's really helpful because if you have questions leading up to today, you can call me or any one of the staff members or Select Board. But looking at what I wrote in the budget report, the Bridge 7 engineering expenses are included in this as we're anticipating moving forward with the project and engineering and design costs. And it also says that we have added some money in here for, and I can't remember, someone else might have to remind me the amount, but we added, I think it was $10,000, Russ might remember, for doing some design engineering work to look to the future of having to repair, replace the town garage, build a roof of the town garage. And I think we added, I think it was $10,000 that we added, but... Maureen says it was $10,000, so that's what's in there.
Thank you. Another over here.
Nate, River Road, 229, I mean 235, heavy equipment maintenance. Looks like we spent a little over $27,715. I wondered what that went in because I know we just got a new excavator, we got a grader and a loader. That's the three main pieces of equipment that go into that category. So just wondering what broke down or how you come up on that number.
Jennifer, I've got the thing here too, that if you don't have it pulled up on your phone, I can just read what you wrote in your...
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So in Jennifer's budget guide here, the comment on that one was that it's for the hydraulic enhancement, I'm sorry, hydraulic enhancement budgeted to add to the excavator at $27,715. So this is specifically for adding to the excavator to have the hydraulic enhancement. And that's just the cost of that piece of equipment.
Hey, so, and that was to run the brush head they got to put on the excavator?
Yes, that's correct.
And why wasn't that on the purchasing price of the excavator when they got the excavator? Read your notes, let me know.
If you don't have hearing loss, you do now. So when we took the loan, my understanding, and Russ can correct me, my understanding is that when we took the loan for the excavator, there were some components of the excavator that we wanted to have. For instance, some of the hydraulics needed to run a brush clearing device for that excavator. And that wasn't deemed to be part of the bond or the note that we had taken to purchase that piece of equipment. So it was felt that we should come back and amend our next following budget to allow us to have that enhancement on that piece of equipment. So that's why you're seeing that change now is that we have not, we have not made that modification to our excavator to help our road crew out when clearing the roads for brush and whatnot. I don't know if you want to expand upon that?
Go ahead, keep talking.
I can expand a little bit further, Nate. So when we purchased the excavator and the mulch head, it was, it was talked about at the time, but wasn't sure if we really needed it to run that mulch head. And though we can run the mulch head, it does not run efficiently the way it is currently set up. So with enhancing the hydraulic system, we can utilize machine at its capacity and work faster and more efficient than having to shut the machine, shut the mulch head down and move the machine and then start again. We can move and mulch all at the same time. It was unfortunately something that we didn't do at the time and probably should have, but moving forward, we all learned something from it. Overall, it's been a great piece of equipment to have, saves a lot of man hours and really does a slick job. So you'll be seeing more of that here in the future. It allows the mulch head to stay at its full hydraulic capacity at all times. What happens currently is to try to move the boom or the machine at the same time the mulch head is moving or operating, the mulch head loses force and then does not run at its capacity. So you're not cutting the brush at the same time. It just, it slows down. So when you try to move the boom uphill, so to speak, it loses power or you can't move... Or you can't move the machine and mow at the same time or cut at the same time. It loses momentum in the mulch head. So you've got to shut down, move, start again. With this enhancement, it allows full hydraulic to all of the machines. You can move and mulch at the same time.
Just remind folks, let's try and stay on the budget directly. We're now on Article Four, which is the total highway fund expenditures. And mind everybody, comments, come back to the moderator. Any other comments, questions, amendments for Article Four? Are we ready for a vote on Article Four? Article Four reads, "Shall the voters approve total highway fund expenditures of $1,995,739, of which $1,554,739 shall be raised by taxes and $441,000 by non-tax revenue." All those in favor of Article Four as presented, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Article Four passes. Onto Article Five, "To transact any other business thought proper when met." Is there a motion on Article Five? And this does not require a second, since we will not be voting. You keep it? Oh, thank you. We need a motion on Article Five. Over here, we'll get you to state it again, thanks.
Alice Maynard, Timber Ridge Road, I move Article Five.
Okay, we don't need a second. That's good. Thank you. So, "Other business thought proper when met." We cannot take any binding action on this. Over here.
Peter Duval, Finer Drug. I have a resolution to get the sense of the body about an important matter. And I'll pass around some copies of the resolution that you can share and scan the QR code to get the live... Go ahead, take some of those. And if you scan the QR code, you'll get to the live document so you can see the improvements that I've already made to it. This is a resolution about McNeil Generating Station and a review that is desperately needed of its forty-year operation and the great cost burden that is created for the town and its residents individually through our electric rates and the electric utilities that own the plant. Majority owner is Burlington Electric Department, but Green Mountain Power owns about a third. And then a bunch of other municipal utilities own the remainder. So I rise to speak about a cost to the town that's an unnecessary burden.
Peter, if I can stop you for just a second. I think where this is headed, it looks like, is towards a resolution to advise the select board...
Exactly.
Which I will rule out of order. The reason it's out of order is that we cannot take any binding action. And this would be a binding action to advise the select board.
Would you like to propose a modification to the language that would make it less binding?
I would not.
Somehow, somehow we've been able to advise on nuclear weapons and many other topics in decades past.
I think that this is out of order. Now, I can be overruled by the body. If the body by a two-thirds majority wishes to pursue this resolution, by a two-thirds majority, the body can do so. Okay, is there...
Let me, allow me to read the resolution so that everybody knows what it's about. Yeah, they would need to know what the resolution is about in order to...
No, I don't, I don't believe so. I think you are out of order, and so I think we don't need to have the discussion. Okay? Yes, question over here.
Bob Linda, Pleasant Valley Road. I would, I don't know if it's a place to propose, but I would propose possibly putting that resolution up for next year's meeting. And I presume that would be a proper order.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said. Could you say it again?
All right. Could Peter's proposal be proposed for next year's discussion?
By a petition, by a petition to the board. It could be presented to the board. And then the board could consider whether to put it on as a warned article for next year. That is the alternative option, yes.
Seems like maybe would fix the...
Procedurally, procedurally, what you say there is correct. Other business thought proper when warned. I see no other business... Oh, I'm sorry, another one? Sure. What could be proper would be, you know, we're getting ready to have a maintenance activity for the Tomasi Meadow on date X and would just encourage people to come and help. That would be a thought proper one more. You can't take any binding action. That's, that's the trick, is you can't commit to doing anything. No. Okay. If it did not require a vote here at town to do that, that's the thing we can't do, is take a vote to do an action. Any other Article Five business thought proper when met? Okay, I believe then that we are on to the warned Australian ballot questions. And so I will read these. They do not require a second. And we can pause to see if there's any discussion about any of them. Article Six reads, "To elect all town officers and school directors as required by law." Is there a motion to that effect? Actually, I'm sorry, we do not require a motion on that. So Article Six is to elect all town officers and school directors as required by law. We can pause if there's any discussion on that. None so appearing. Article Seven is, "Shall the town appropriate $2,000 to the Jericho Underhill Food Hub for education and services in support of local foods?" Any questions, discussion about that? None so appearing. Article Eight reads, "Shall general obligation bonds or notes of the town of Underhill in an aggregate amount not to exceed $878,000, subject to reduction from available state and federal construction grants and aid and other financial resources, be issued to finance the removal and replacement of Bridge Seven on Pleasant Valley Road." That's the bridge at the corner of Pleasant Valley and Dean Road. Any questions? The town had an informational meeting on this last week, so some of you may have participated in that. Yes, question over here.
Kathy Waymoth, Sage Road. You mentioned that there would not be through traffic, there's not going to be a temporary bridge. So how long is that project expected to last?
Far too long, but yes, we'll, I'll let somebody else, you know, address that issue.
So if the bond question passes, we'll be, we'll be pursuing a grant as kind of alluded to in the article. But the construction wouldn't start until the next summer. So it'd be summer of '26. And we only have a small window to work. So it's my understanding that we would complete the project during that construction season. So in other words, there's a certain time where you can't, you can't get into the stream. And I believe that starts July 1. And then there's a, there's an expiration date of October. So we're anticipating, due to the design, it's more of a, it's a, it's a pretty expeditious bridge to be constructed. So by not, by not constructing a temporary bridge, we're saving a lot of time. So we're just going to basically close the road, come in, remove the old bridge, construct the new bridge within that construction season.
May have mentioned it's a construction project, okay. Another follow-up over here?
Thanks Brad, Kathy Waymoth. But I don't, I didn't get a sense of how long that would be. Is that a month or three months or two weeks or... Any idea of how long that would be? No?
I think he has a, maybe a rough idea.
You know, I would safely plan from June to October.
But... Yep. But technically, they could go past October 1st as long as they're not working in the water. They could be above the water, still doing abutments or surface of the bridge or anything like that. Technically, it could run past October 1st, but not necessarily. So it could last for four or five months, you know, instead of three months, just to give you heads up.
Another comment, question over here?
Jonathan Fernald, Poker Hill Road. And I apologize for missing the informational meeting, but could you state what the ramification is if the proposal does not pass?
Any...
So your question was if this, if this bond does not pass. Well, that would lead us to, so right currently now, the select board has posted a weight limit on it for 24,000 pounds. So no overweight trucks can cross over the bridge. If this does not pass, we would, we would obviously try again. We would continue to monitor the bridge. It may come down to having traffic, just one-way traffic. So we may have to install a temporary stoplight on each side. So we would basically just, or try to pursue other avenues to get the money to do it. Such as maybe proposing a portion of the cost in next year's budget. But other than, basically, we knew, this bridge started to deteriorate in a kind of a quicker fashion than we anticipated. We're monitoring, monitoring it, and it became, it soon became evident that it was a priority.
Did the V-Trans report get posted on the town website, the inspection report?
Yes, so yeah, I encourage you to look at the, go to February 27th on the calendar of our website. So our website is very calendar-driven. If you go to the date of that informational meeting, you'll see the inspection report for yourself. While V-Trans does consider it fair, they do say that it is need of replacement. Unfortunately, in the state of Vermont, we have many bridges that were built after the '27 flood. So it's my theory that they have to be very liberal in their evaluations. Because if we failed all of these bridges, we would be in big trouble. And a gentleman, Bart Johnson, came to our meeting. He used to work for V-Trans. The life expectancy, apparently, according to him, after the '27 flood, many of these bridges, it was a, it was a fast design to get a bridge in place quickly after the great flood, and their life expectancy was 50 years. So it's held up well, it doesn't owe us anything. And it's really our last piece of major infrastructure. Once that's complete, I think all of our major bridges are in good order.
Brad?
I would just like to add a further comment. As Brad said, we've been put on notice by our engineers that the bridge is in trouble. So in the event we don't pass this bond, we would have to take mitigation steps to ease the burden on the bridge. Ultimately, if we have no bond passage in the relative near future, in the next five years, the bridge could be closed permanently. So we need to take the steps to reduce load weight, which we've done. The next step would be to put it to a one-lane bridge with traffic lights to curtail the amount of weight on the bridge passing over time. And the next step would be ultimately closure. But we have been put on notice by the engineers that the bridge is in trouble. So we have to take steps.
Okay. We're still on Article Eight regarding the bond for replacement of Bridge Seven. Any, any other comments on that? Well, then, no other comments so appearing. We have actually completed in perhaps record time the warned business for the day. And the next item would be if there is a motion for adjournment. Peter Geis, so moved. I'm sorry, we have one more question, all right? Before I'll accept that motion, we have one more question.
Kathy Waymoth, Sage Road. So we've been sitting here wondering who these two people are on the right that we don't know. And someone just said maybe they're new select board members. Could we have the select board members introduced?
You did elect them, so let me ask you all to introduce yourselves down here on the end, yeah.
Hi, my name is Maureen Collins-Cold. I live on Pinnacle Ridge.
I'm Dan Kelsey, and I also live on Pinnacle Ridge. We are neighbors.
And why don't the rest of you just say who you are too, so we complete the list?
My name is Dan Steinbauer. I live on Range Row.
I'm Bob Stone. I'm the chair of the select board and I live on Maple Ridge.
My name is Patty Richards. I'm on Pleasant Valley Road. And I've been on the select board now for four and a half years.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that, yeah. One more. One more over here? Care to introduce yourself? Want to step up, use the microphone? Uh, never mind.
No, I'll stand if I'm allowed to say something, but I wanted to do this last year and I didn't get the nerve to do it, but, um, my name is Russ Clark, I'm the Highway Supervisor in town. I've been able to meet a lot of you in town, but I'm sure there's a lot more that I have not met, but I would encourage that at some point. I just wanted to say thank you to the Select Board, who has our back and support through the Highway Department, um, on a daily basis, which I really greatly appreciate. Do want to thank Dan for another awesome job. I've known Dan, I think, since nineteen eighty-eight, when I joined the Underhill Jericho Fire Department, and he was a member of the Essex Rescue, and we worked, uh, closely through a lot of the years, and I've been able to even, uh, mimic Dan a little bit, but I won't get into that today. But I'd also, we've had a pretty strenuous winter this year, and we've been very busy, and I just would like to recognize a few people that have made this winter go as good as it did, and I wanted to bring them with me today, but that just didn't work out, but the rest of the road crew, uh, Scott Kilpeck, who is going on his fifteenth year with the town, Dwayne Norway, who is going on his fourteenth year in this town, and we have a fairly new employee, Ken Blodgett, who is on his second year, but these guys are top-notch, and we start at about three o'clock in the morning, and we go until it's done. And I just think that, uh, you all ought to know who is behind the wheels of these trucks, who's behind the controls of the grader, who's in the excavator ditching and doing primo job around town, but, uh, I just think they need to be recognized and, uh, thank the town for your support and the thumbs up and so on. Many people said, "Why would you want such a thankless job?", but I gotta tell you, it's not thankless. It's very rewarding, we get many compliments and thank yous and very few complaints, so we appreciate that. But I just wanted to say something and thank everybody for coming today and, uh, for the respect that you do give to the Highway Department. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I believe we can go back to a motion to adjourn. Peter Geis, so moved, is there a second? Second Deb Moore, all right. Non-debatable, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I believe we're on to lunch, thank you all very much.